I don't know what happened. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I can, I, I. I'm hoping this doesn't happen again, but it looks like somebody started a meeting. On the account while we were logged in and they ended our meeting.
Oh, I thought, okay, I wasn't even touching anything.
No, 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 it wasn't anything you did, somebody with access to the town account. Logged in and started a meeting and ended ours.
Oh, okay.
So I do not know, I, I don't, I don't have time to figure out who did that and do the meeting at the same time, but. I will contact Jay, it wasn't a board meeting, it was something, it's is real, it's something about um the town insurance.
Okay.
They have a meeting scheduled and they knocked us off when they started it.
Oh, no, that's so evil. Okay, well, it happens anyway, so time is flying as we all know. We have David back on, we have Kim back on, we have Amy, we have Janet, we have Jane, I guess the gang's all here.
Yeah, sorry about that, if they start the meeting again, everybody. That will knock us off again, so I'll have to send you a new link. From the town as two accounts, I don't know why they're not using the other account, they probably didn't check the webinars. And so they didn't know we were meeting, but they did have to click end other meeting. If I don't know if we did that, but we're actively doing a board meeting.
Fortunately, we're, we're not paranoid, right?
I, I apologize, but look, it's if I'm not dealing with self checkout tech issues, we're dealing with the Zoom issues on the town, right?
Absolutely, anyway, well, can we move to the expense report now if there are no more questions on the uh. On the uh self checkout, which looks like it sort of wasn't our fault, um any questions about the expense report?
Sorry, Marguerite, I just had one other comment about the tech, so Ryan, you said that um you can't really tell if it's not working unless like the slip doesn't show the name in the title. That something we could log in as a ticket with the vendor. I mean, shouldn't they throw some sort of error if it's not actually checking the book?
Yeah, that we're, we're gonna be looking at, they have a new software package. That they use for the machines, so we um. We were kind of not in a good place, I would say, a couple of years ago to upgrade to the new software, I think the new software is responsive to uh like. Shutting down if there's a server error, so I will explore that, Kim, I can't give you a timeframe on when we could do it.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
It's, it is a work issue and we don't want people thinking their books are checked out when they're not, that's kind of a, a big, a big issue, you're right.
Okay, yeah, hopefully the new software update handles that, thanks for staying on top of it.
What percentage of checkouts is, goes through that? Do you think?
Sorry, say that again, Amy?
What percentage of the checkouts are self checkout?
Like ballpark, probably somewhere between ten and fifteen percent, it's most of the checkouts are still at the desk, especially because it's only in one area of the library and I would say. Over half the circulation is in the children's room.
Right, yeah.
That's a good, that's a good question.
More than the T room, I can tell you that, so it's, it's beaten one area of the library.
There you go, um it's good the checkout is right next to the desk. I mean, it's good the electronic one is right next to the desk, so. People are there, okay, um questions about the expense report? Looks on track. Um alright, the number four is the library facade restoration project update, where are we? We've all studiously read the draft.
Oh my god. So, what I, just because, because we could probably spend a lot of time. Talking about this, but I think there's a, what I think is kind of a gradual next step. For me to take, which is I would like to circle back with the former operating project manager, Mary Bolso, who guys have all met. And then our architects, so that's Lynn Spencer and Doug Manley from Spencer Sullivan and Vote. And, and it's, I think this is probably more for the architects than anybody else, but there are specific addenda pieces. With images of the building that need to be put in, a lot of those materials were prepared as part of the documents by uh the SSV, by Lynn and Doug. And I'd like to see if they'd be willing to kind of add some of the addenda items into the draft to kind of. You know, put in those, some of the pieces that need to be put in there before it really, you know. Goes more prime time, I think that's kind of the next step, because we need to visually identify the historical areas of the building uh in sort of the back of the document.
Well, I'm sure they've done it before for other projects, so it shouldn't be. Too much of a reach, yeah.
I, I have not made it through the whole thing. But in the first several pages, I had a lot of things that I either. Thought we shouldn't have in there or would want to change and things. Like, I, I don't think that this came from Preservation Worcester, but they're saying. We wouldn't allow to put signage on the building and things like that, so I think our lawyer wrote that, it's, you know. Anyway, I've got a number of issues with it.
Yeah, I think that's something that it's gonna require a longer discussion when we see a, a more final draft, because I think there's a fair amount of. Boilerplate from other.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of boilerplate from. The Massachusetts Historical Commission, because the template comes from the MHC, so I think. I mean, one of the things we can look at in it is what a blank template looks like versus what a. Non-blank, because there may be things that the lawyer added, I think they're also looking at um. Kind of like the Burnett House Agreement, some of the elements of that, because they had access to that, but I, I also. I mean, one of the things, because it's gonna have to eventually get reviewed by council again, and so, I mean, there might be. A fair amount of back and forth on this, because if there's stuff that the group wants to, this group wants to take out. And there's stuff that the lawyer is recommending we keep in, and then, you know, it's gonna depend, because I think the select board is also gonna take a look at this too, and they may have feedback, so.
Well, I'm, and the, the other part of it is what, what's the CPC uh input on it?
Nothing yet.
But they will have some, I assume?
I guess so.
They may, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's, at this point, it's, it's an early draft, I would say, should we revisit it next month, you think?
I think, I think this is gonna be probably a standard item for a while.
For a long time, right.
So, but are you okay with me as the next step? Reaching out to Mary and to the SSV reps and seeing if they can add to it? And then, you know, Janet, if you, you and I, I think, right, can probably meet. And then maybe look at some, some of the feedback that you have, if you guys have. Individual questions or concerns about it, I guess, send those in to me, and I'm happy to kind of um. You know, keep a, a document of all the things that we're tracking.
Sounds good, um so we'll, we'll uh, we'll, we'll visit it again next month, how's that? Sounds like a plan, alright, um. If everyone's okay with that, uh item number five is library signage. Uh I think that's a Jane and Ryan discussion at this point.
Oh, yes, we met a couple of weeks ago out by the crumbling sign that's at the front walkway. And um we talked to Chris Leroy about installing the little. Little library box, uh. The free library thing. Um and was he gonna remove that sign there, the one that's right there uh by the end of the walkway? Ryan, can you hear me?
Yes, he is, um. So that if you're familiar with it, that was part of the show grant application was. Um there's sort of a dilapidated sign, it started to, um it has the hours outside the building, so um. That's wearing away, what we're gonna do is basically take the top part of that sign off with the hours sign. And remove it completely, and then we're gonna use the post as the stationary area for the little free library. We also wanted to, because the first and foremost in my mind, everyone, we wanted to make sure that we addressed accessibility. So we talked about um just kind of removing some of the, um there's some growth, like veget- you know vegetation that's like. Right in front of the pillar, so we talked about kind of reorienting the stonework, so it's a little bit easier for people to access the, the library as well, and then um. Also like the placement and how high it is were things that we, we discussed and looked at.
So. We'll make sure that it's ADA compliant, because there's things in front of it, there were like bricks, gray bricks.
They were cobble, yeah, yeah.
Uh someone from getting close in a wheelchair, so um. But he hasn't done that yet, he hasn't done what, yeah. He also hasn't pulled out that dead. Anyway.
Oh, we're saving, we're saving that tree, that tree, we've all gotten fond of that tree.
The little one between our two signs out near the corner, so, so anyway, we went on to talk about the, well, not really with him, but the rest of the signs. Part of the meeting had to do with the library garden, which was uh is the Southborough Gardener's responsibility, and yesterday. Um Curtis uh landscaping came and dug it up and replanted some new. Uh rhododendrons and, and it looks much better, like if you walk over there, you can tell, it was very sad and hadn't been. Um paid it, paid any attention um to COVID, but now it's been fixed up, so. Part of that meeting was to alert him that. Someone other than Jay and Jay landscaper, who are the crew that takes care of the library. We're gonna come and do that, and that's happened, so um. Then we talked about the two signs near the corner with the lettering, the one, I don't know if it still says Jill Roman on it, um. The very small one with the sandbag holding it there. And the dead, dead bush, and then the bigger one with um letters, lettering on it, and um. My opinion only, that the smaller one was unneeded and unattractive, um. But uh. Well, Ryan, do you wanna comment on that?
Yeah, and we are, we're actually, there's gonna be kind of um. Winterization. That starts to occur at the library, which happens kind of every year, but that sign is gonna be moved inside for the winter soon, and then it won't be kind of. We won't be putting it back out for quite a while, um. You know, I don't, yeah, I don't think either of that, we, we kind of discussed how both of the signs are not ideal, like they both are not. Really, I think what we're looking for long term, so I think one of the things that we could. You know, one of the, one of the collaborative group projects we could look at is maybe exploring other sign vendors and seeing if there's other um. Other potential um. Things we'd like to do on the intersection, you know, one of the things I did send out was from. The building inspector on what, what signs were zoned for, which has to be consideration to think about. Um as we kind of move forward with that, but I think we can also kind of engage with the building department. And if we have, uh you know, something that's kind of the same size roughly of the existing sign, but it's slightly different, I think. Hopefully, we can get something like that.
Now, are we talking the sandwich board sign, are we talking the brick sign?
No, we're talking about the one that's there with the fake bricks on the bottom, and I didn't not mention this, but the bricks are still. Coming off and Chris offered that it was the weed whackers that were knocking off the, it's like a, a sheet of fake brick. Image on the bottom, and um. That's what we're talking about, but um we uh. I, I, I did a little independent survey of local libraries. And ours is the only one, uh Westboro had a little sign like the Jill Roman sign, but Wellesley, Hopkinton, Westboro. Just one big sign that says. Wellesley Library, and I think I did make the point um that during COVID, the um media. And um social, what do you call it, social media presence of the library has, has tripled in its, its communication with. Our community and, and beyond, and I personally don't think we need the, those signs out there to put out what programs we have that. That um. Our community is fairly sophisticated and can, you know, receive the emails or log into the Facebook page or the website. And I find, and there's, there's a self for a blog as well, I find that those. Those sources of information are sufficient, now this is just my opinion, and that we don't really need that extra sign.
So this, this is important, Jane, because it, it goes down to what is, what do we want the sign out there to be doing? Um and it has been used for advertising, and I think it's a good discussion, do we, do we need it, and how many? People, how many people does the sandwich board bring in, do we need it, right, I think that's a good question.
The one with the lettering that you can change, and you know, one more point is that you're, there, there are pedestrians, but. Driving by, can you, can you really take it all in as a?
Okay, so I guess this goes to your, you're making a, a good case that the, the advertising that's done on the sign is not needed. Basically, I mean.
That would be my opinion, yeah.
Okay, when I, I think this is, we should talk about that, yeah.
One of, one of the things that Jane and I kinda, I think, talked about really right at the end is that the existing. Sign that's out there that just says Southborough Library, that's pretty consistent with the other signs in town, with kind of the stonework pillars. That because of the Main Street Project conclusion, it's in a very kind of odd place on the property. Um so, and as you recall, the sign was damaged, right, it was split in two, and so the sign we have right now is repaired. So one of the things is because. She's correct in that there's been significant damage from the landscapers already on the, the faux brick sign, so. Long term, I think, I, the, the repaired uh pillar sign, which is Southborough Library, that site is not gonna last forever. I would say we have maybe a, a few more years with it, um. Hope, if there's any, ever any intersection construction or anything going over there. Fingers crossed they don't hit that sign, because if you hit it the wrong way, it will come apart now.
I have, I have heard Karen say that she will move it.
If we were to remove those other two signs.
Yes.
The brick one and the.
Put the granite one where it should be.
Where those are, sort of, yeah.
Yeah, so we kind of talked about that, is if we have to relocate the larger sign anyway, and or potentially replace it in the future, like. I think it would be nice that if we do end up getting that sign redone. Right, that we could move it then, because that'd be an opportunity to move it and then put it. Kind of where the faux brick sign is now, and then that would be, it would be on a more level surface over there too.
It would be consistent with the other signs, the community house, the, the townhouse, and, and, and I think that makes. Sense with the new intersection too, it's kind, and our new facade, you know, we, we spend a lot of money and it looks, it looks great, we wanna not sort of. Take away from that.
Um the main cost of that particular sign we don't, is the pillars, right?
No, it's the white part of the sign that.
Really?
White part is like five or six grand.
Yeah, because it, they hit it in a split, and now we've had it repaired. But if you get close to it, you can see.
Oh yeah, I've seen it, I just, yeah, usually.
I think that, when I was first on the board, that sign went up and there was a, the, the friends were paying was back and forth, back and forth, and so finally. Um some of us just went to the townhouse and said, we like your sign, where did you get it, and it was a guy on Fruit Street in Hopkinton. And it was three thousand dollars um to do that panel, and the cost has gone hugely up and it's probably more than five now, because when it was hit. I asked him what it would cost to just replace it, thinking we could get three thousand dollars together, and he said five plus. Because he can't get the materials anymore, but I've heard Karen Gallagher say that since it's lopsided now, that she, it's sort of. Very possible that she would be able to like, take the white thing off, move the pillars to where we want it, and then put the white thing back on, and that would work. That, to me, it looks kind of funny where it is, but.
It's, yeah, well, they, they, you know, increased the sidewalk, the whole, the whole dynamic of it was changed because of the.
There's also out there, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
There's also out there a, a, a concrete bottom for what was a stop, stoplight. Do you know what I'm talking about, it's this.
Yeah, I do.
It's this thing that used to be a traffic signal, the bottom of it is still there. And I'm, I'm, I mean, it's, it could be like some kind of art piece, but it's, it looks very much the leftover, right? I'm wondering if they could get that out of there too.
So, well, it, it's this kind of like a long-term project, because I think where Jane and I left it was. We are kind of using the signs now, we're probably gonna continue to use them while they're available, but I would just say, if like the faux brick sign gets damaged again. I don't say replace it, I think if that white sign gets damaged again. That, that would be the opportunity to move it and have a discussion about replacing it, and then, you know, if you guys, I would let Jane know if you. Have strong feelings about the grounds at this point, but I kind of like. Oh, yeah, no, go ahead, Jane.
It would like to hear what others think.
Yeah, exactly.
I have to go stand and look, you know, it's, I can't, I can't picture half of the things you're talking about. I just look at the gorgeous facade.
Yes, the facade is so beautiful, uh Kim, you look like you wanted to say something.
Oh, I was just gonna say, like, like Janet, I, I need to go and, and look and think with this in mind, but I think Jane, you bring up a lot of good points, it's like we. That intersection has changed a lot, and. You know, the wear on some of those signs, um and we've had, I think, a lot of bad luck with um just everything getting hit. Um but I, I think it's a good question you bring up that um. Is, is it worth the work to change the lettering on the sign, is that what's drawing people in, or is that something that we're doing that? You know, is taking up resources that doesn't provide a lot, so I think that um. Yeah, I mean, I'll start looking at other uh libraries and signs too, um because I think at least for me, like the, the readability of things um. Matters a lot, and it's, it's a little small for me, the letters, I don't know how everyone else feels, but I think. I think maybe we wait through this winter and honestly, it feels like something else is gonna get, get hit, and we can see what's still alive in this.
See what makes it through.
Gets taken care of, right?
No, I agree, and I think it looks too cluttered with all the signs that are out there, I think one clean, nice sign at this point would be. Go along with our beautiful new facade, but.
I'm sorry, Janet, I was just gonna say really quick, if we're striving to make the library more accessible. Having very tiny letters that are difficult to read, it's not good, but I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, Janet.
No, that's okay, I, it's separate but related discussion, what is this, have, have we had a discussion about this free library thing? That's news to me.
With the little, the little, it's a little box, it's, it's. You know, you've seen them around.
Yeah, we, when you weren't here. We did talk about it briefly and, and I think multiple other meetings, Janet, but it's, it's. So it's like, it's a pre-built little free library, so it came from the vendor, and then it's gonna be a place that we can put some of the donated books outside. But I, I can send you a picture of what it looks like, it's very tasteful, and it's not a very large contraption. It's, it's pretty tiny, I would say, but it does have.
It just seems odd to me to have a free library outside of a library.
I, I, well, yeah, it's sorry, that was my idea. So I, I'll take the hit on that one, but yeah, we were, because we get a lot of people who wanna donate books, and then if we're, if we're actively not accepting donations for the sale. We thought it would be a, a nice thing too, where if you came to the library and the library was closed, you could also take a book, was the kind of the idea I had.
There's another one over right near St. Mark's, right down uh eighty-five.
Yeah, that was a Boisque Eagle Scott project, right?
And one at the um commuter rail station, and there's another one in Fayetteville that the friends are working on repairing right now.
They're cute.
People have them outside their houses too.
Yeah, they're nice, well, if it doesn't work, we can always take it down.
Um, well, it would be an improvement on the sign that's there, which is kind of pewing.
It, that's, that's, that is very sad.
I was, I was kind of coming up with an idea, Janet, that was like. Cute, that I think would be good for the community, but like the sign was coming down either way, so it allows us to repurpose the pillar. Right, and still, and the, I will say the LFLs in town have been very, very popular, so popular that the Fayetteville one, they broke the door off it, and we have to fix it, so. You know, I think. Well, if it's too much for all of you, we can also look at repurposing it. In another location, if you don't.
I say that, that whole quadrant is gonna be very interesting when we get done, and is now a work in progress, and we can all be very creative about what we wanna do there. We've got the recharging bench, um we have the dead tree, which is very important.
There's dead trees.
The dead tree is like, we'll all be sorry to see that one go, and so I think this is, this is, this is actually maybe fun. To figure out what's gonna go in there, because it's gonna look nice when we get done with it, um. I hate to rush us along, but I'm gonna do it anyway, because I know, Ryan, you're trying to get where you're going, um. The, I, article, article, sorry, item number six on our agenda, special town meeting discussion, I was gonna do that, I'm gonna say. Nothing to report, so let's just table that forever, um nothing went on that impacts the library last night at the town meeting. Um the circulating wireless hotspot policy, uh Ryan, do you wanna explain where we are on that?
Well, after promising you guys policies for months, now I'm like throwing a brand new one at you, but um this is kind of came up, I guess, as a more time-sensitive issue, because we're circulating. Um the ones that we paid for out of the budget, um so a lot of libraries have uh similar uh sort of one-page or two-page circulating policies. The patrons agree to, we thought Carol and I have discussed this, Carol has checked out the majority of them. Um at the desk to people, a lot of questions are coming up about the loan periods, about how these work. Um so we're kind of um creating some other documentation that goes out to people, this is really just a draft policy. So I don't, I don't think you guys really should approve it at this point, I think we should let it kind of marinate. For uh the, until November, and you guys can come back with any feedback, this is just kind of the working draft right now. And then we kind of just wanted to, I'm floating it out to the library employees too, who have all contributed to it, but I will say, I have to give Carol Logan credit, this was like. I sent this, the Leicester policy as like an example, and then Carol kind of immediately started looking at like. The parts that worked for us and the parts to um add that um were affecting our patrons in particular, so it's very, very similar to the Leicester policy, which is why I keep. Um giving them credit, because a lot of this was their wording, but I think it, it, it fit the best out of all the policies that have been kind of. Floating around listservs that I've seen, so.
Oh, and thank you to Carol for that, I like having the uh directions and the policy on the same piece of paper.
Yeah.
And the directions may change as, as, you know, the, the years go on and the devices change, but I like having the two of them together. I think that was great. Any uh thoughts about this, except for thank you, Carol, for.
I, I think the policy is good, Ryan, I just had one question, um there was a line in there that said the hotspot cannot be entered by staff as claimed to returned.
I marked the same one, yeah.
Is that necessary to put in the policy, or that, is that more just rules for the staff?
Yeah, so, Kim, that's a very good note, I think um Carol was looking at this as much for staff as she was for the public. And that was also kind of a note I had, so because we, we were working on it, and um. Uh that's a good note, I think that that piece should be removed, that is more for us, I think, on the staff side, and that doesn't really make people from a public. Policy standpoint aren't gonna understand what that sentence means, it's really, that's a staff workflow issue, so you're right, that's, that, that I think in November. When the, when the policy is kind of re um introduced into the meeting, you won't see that line there, but if there's any editorial feedback you guys have as you're reading the policies. Please send it to me, and I will make this part of the packet for November.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
I think that's the only like staff, staff-centric note, though, I will say that, Kim, because I did kind of, there were other things. And I kind of had a hand in, in editing this as well, that we kind of took out, because they didn't make sense, there's also kind of a redundant part about. You can only take one at a time, and that's on purpose, it's kind of at the beginning of the first part, and then there's kind of the bullet points, and then you kind of see it appear again. That's on purpose, because this is something we've really, it's come up as an issue. Where people want more than one, which we understand, but we don't have. We don't have the capacity to do more than one, and we need to give all our patrons an equal chance, so we wanted to emphasize that.
Is it per library card or per family for library?
We're doing, so we, Carol, the big discussion about that, Marguerite, too, on, between Carol and I. We, not every family member has the same last name, and then people do have the same last name, but they're in different households, so we didn't, the Leicester policy says something about. Household use, but we don't know who is in whose house, we don't, we know our patrons well, we don't wanna be that invasive, so we're gonna limit it to library cards. We do that similar with other um items. We don't wanna be that invasive, so we're gonna limit it to library cards. We do that similar with other um items. If we have to be restrictive, like museum passes are the best example.
Right, right. Okay, that's so an ongoing thing. Um, so we'll we'll see this again in November.
Yes, and again, if you have any feedback on the policy, please send it to me and I'm happy to sit and go over any of the points. I know it's like, it is a full page, it's pretty. Uh, even though it's a one pager, it's pretty dense. There's a lot in there, so again, please read through it and any feedback is welcome.
So the hotspots are are a successful program.
Eleven of the twelve hotspots are checked out right now, so.
It's amazing.
Yeah, they're popular.
That's great, that's great. Thank you for even. Having that happen in the first place, Ryan, that was really good. The the next thing I'd like to move on to is David attended um a meeting at the Westboro. Um, library concerning their public information about the. About the renovation that they're doing. As I understand it, they got nine million dollars from the state. They were part of the grant cycle. You probably all know this anyway. And the construction amount was, I think, twenty-three and it's now sky million and it's now skyrocketed to, what is it, David, now?
Thirty-five and change.
Thirty-five million, so they've gotta go to the town and ask for. Uh, as you said, fifty percent more millions than they had originally and. It's gonna be a rocky town meeting. Um, and I thought. Since David has notes on that, he could talk because we are on the capital um plan. For uh moving forward with a renovation project here and there's nothing to say that we won't run into exactly the same problem. Which is, they thought they had, uh Maureen thought she had a certain uh cost for the library in millions. And it's turned out to be on its way to doubling by the time they get to do it, so. Your basic nightmare, you do everything right and then this hits you. So David, do you wanna tell us? I know you got notes on it, what what went on?
Well, I'll be brief in the interest of time, but yeah, I got two and a half pages of notes, but uh. Uh, they had, there have been four uh four open forum meetings uh run by uh Maureen. Emiatt, I'm now pronouncing her name right, I hope. Who, by the way, speaks very highly of you, Ryan. And Mary Johnson, Mary Johnson, who is. Uh, Marguerite's counterpart on their uh board. Lot of things going on, uh. But the 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 cost issue, well, they've gone, they've gone to town meeting four times and been turned down all four times. They're going down, they have a town meeting coming up on the seventeenth. The numbers keep uh getting larger and um. Uh, despite a lot of positive uh comments uh from the library staff. Uh, but I, my judgment, just based on the questions asked, uh. Suggests that there are a lot of people who are uh very concerned about. Uh, the the cost increase. Uh, I I think it works out to be three hundred and thirty dollars per year per taxpayer. Uh, uh, and. So the the selectmen have voted um five, nothing in support uh of this of. Spentiture, uh, the finance committee has voted six-two against, which is kind of interesting. Um, but they've, they've um. They've got. Just based on the questions that people um asked, that that there's a, there's a lot of pushback, I guess, is what I wanna say. Uh, however, uh, I would conclude by saying that uh. That uh they believe that new construction would be cheaper than a a massive renovation. And um. But there's an overwhelming uh majority of people who um. Don't want the library to leave the center of town. Uh, I think that's important, so. And and the big mystery uh there, and it will be for us as well, is. They still don't know where the temporary quarters will be if and when they get the financing. To do the project. So um. That is, uh, even though they're next to, I think it's called the Forbes Building, which is the municipal municipal building in in downtown of. Downtown Westboro, right across the street or sideways to to the library. Uh, there's, there's concern as to whether that would be adequate, so that's just another huge of. Unknown hanging over the project, uh, so you've got the financing issue. And you've got the temporary quarters issue. They they will uh. They will know, the town will know on on the seventeenth after their town meeting. Whether they're oh for five and um they're committed to to going forward. I must say, uh, this is Amiatt. Is uh very upbeat about the prospects of of um. Getting the town to finally uh agree to to pay for this, but it's uh, it it goes up um. Uh, a half a million dollars a month, uh, I think. And so kicking the can down the road is uh is is a huge cost ball by itself. I'll leave it there for now.
What, what, what kind of questions were the attendees asking?
Uh, well, the they were asking about the effect of the town on the tax rate. That was uh the underlying effect, you know, what what's the overall? Cost broken down by taxpayer. Uh, the uh, as I mentioned, uh, they were. They were concerned about um. Space constraint, they're they're also working with a small site. And uh, they don't wanna add parking, they don't wanna take too much of their site for parking. If they do an expansion. Um, and the. I guess those are, those are the main, the the thrust, uh, uh, Marguerite, the thrust of the of the questions.
Has the, has, has the town meeting already paid for the planning and design side of it?
They've gotten a grant for that. Um, they've gotten a a grant and there's some question. As to whether or not uh there's ARPA money available and if so, if it can be used uh to to further uh the 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 front end of the project. Uh, and uh, it's also mentioned, I guess, uh, Ryan sent this. Um, this message out, I think, to all of us, saying that uh. That they have uh. Contacted Governor Baker. Uh, to, uh, I'm reading from his memo to add a a line to the October supplementary budget. This is the state budget. Who add uh eighty-seven point six million dollars to help. Fund current and upcoming library projects. Well, that sounds like a lot of money, but that gets spread over. Whatever it is, three hundred and fifty-two cities and towns and institutions, so. Um, it's still very much a work in progress. Uh, I mean, I commend them for their uh their persistence. Um, and I I I don't want to, I don't wanna prejudge, but I I think they're still swimming upstream upstream. I I I wish I could say that. That was not.
So they. So I didn't mean, and I don't mean to to end what you're saying, David, too, but just, I I know the answer to your question, Marguerite. Which is that that they did receive the M B L C. Construction Planning and Design Grant, but in order to qualify for that, the town has to kick in money. So that the town did um authorize funds to do planning and design, so that has been part of this process. I think what the the big hiccup has been has been the price tag, which as David noticed. Like he's noted in his comments, every time this gets deferred, the price goes up. And Shrewsbury kind of years ago went through a similar process, but the the amount of, it's really cuz of the the. I think supply chain issues and the material costs are very exorbitant, depending on where you go now. Uh, Shrewsbury was not in the same situation, but they also had to go to something like four or five town meetings. Is my understanding to get their project approved. And if you've been to Shrewsbury. I feel, I feel like you guys can see the clear benefit that they got. Their library is substantially bigger and a lot more modernized than. Than it was.
Yeah, I think this is just a bad time to be asking for excess money at town meetings, unfortunately for them.
I I will say, uh, in conclusion, that uh in talking to the folks uh after the official meeting, that. That um three people were very pointed and seemingly genuine in their offer to come. If we were interested, uh, offer to come and and speak to a a trustee meeting. Uh, and that included uh, uh, Mrs. Emiatt, the director. Uh, and Mary Johnson, the chair of the Board of Trustees, and also a guy named Ed Baldwin, who was a trustee. Um, that they're happy to meet with us, uh, they're happy to uh. Uh, to share uh their uh. What they've learned and uh, you know, whether they prevail or not. So they're they're very uh, they're very uh, very eager to help us. And share the uh, the goods and the bads that they've been through over the past uh two years of attempts to get the funding.
Other uh, other questions from. Trustees about um. What they're going through. It sounds like an ordeal, frankly.
It is.
Sounds like an ordeal and that Hopkinton had a a foundation that did a lot of fundraising. Um, and I don't think Westboro has that, is that right?
That's correct. Uh, and the the Hopkinton fundraising, I believe, uh, raised a million dollars, which is terrific. But if the the price tag is now at thirty-something and change in Westboro. They have twenty thousand people approximately, we have ten thousand, so let's take our, their numbers by half, let's say. Uh, you know, if if someone were to do uh for Southborough, what someone did in Hopkinton. Uh, yes, a million dollars is is uh, a million more than nothing, but it's still um. It's still a a long reach from there to the the cost of the project, so. Uh, it's, it's, um, it'll be interesting to see what happens at their, their town meeting coming up next week.
Wow, I wish them luck, Janet, what?
Um, the nine million that they're gonna get from the state, how is that calculated?
That was the, uh, I I don't know how it was calculated, uh, Janet, but I can tell you that it was, um, it was simply the. The the number that was uh the total up of the of the grant request. That that doesn't answer your question, but that that was the number that that was on the grant. Is that so correct, Brian?
Yeah, they work with um the M B L C construction specialists. And basically, when the planning and design is completed, it's similar to how we did a planning and design. For the historic work, and then when we went to construction implementation. We looked at the things that were gonna be achieved as part of the project with the add-ons. A big thing to note when with the state money is that I I think some of you probably know exactly where I'm gonna go with this. But is that the state is only looking at paying for a percentage of the overall construction costs. So that does not include your stacks for books, if you're increasing that. It does not include any additional furniture. It does not include any additional technology. So like things like electrical, plumbing infrastructure for us, if there was um. Some sort of relocation of septic, which is something we might look at. You know, Westboro doesn't have to deal with that. Um, so that's a, you know, there're gonna be costs that are kind of. Exclusive to Southborough that are separate, but um it has to be like overall construction cost. I don't know about the parking infrastructure, that's something I'd have to check on, David. I don't know if the state money helps pay for that or not. I think there was an example of a Western Mass library that like needed to widen. Or like create a roadway, and I believe the state did help them pay for that, but it was like necessary. I think it was because of an entryway that was added. There was like no road to get there, if that made sense. So like if it's more of like, I guess, like a cosmetic. Um, alteration to a roadway, I don't think the state pays for it. That's my understanding. But again, you gotta ask the construction people from the state cuz they're the ones that distribute the funds.
Well, um, I'm just wondering why. And the nine million was, they came up with that when the cost was gonna be twenty-six million. So doesn't that go up when they cost then is now thirty-something million?
I was just gonna say, once, it's like when you apply at the time. That is like the money you get, so if you then have to go to your town meeting and get the funds approved. Which sometimes takes a while, depending on the town meeting cycle. And then um, if it fails, like in the case of Westboro, right? Like this is sort of the sliding scale. The cost like already had increased cuz of COVID when they were going. And then it kept getting bigger, so your money from the state doesn't equal out. Because that was the grant amount that was issued at the time. The big thing that happened to Westboro. Was they prioritize all the projects that get approved and Westboro, if you guys have followed this project for a long time, was on a waiting list. So that was, that's also been a big factor in, they were awarded an amount of money. They then were placed on a waiting list and then they had to wait. Years and years before money was issued, and at that point, construction prices had skyrocketed. So this, it is an important learning experience because the same thing could happen to us when we go for this money. But nine million from the state. Is not nothing, I will say, and also there, we may, depending on the cost of our project. Be looking for equivalent less or more money, right? We have to look at what the overall cost is gonna be. But a big factor in this is like co- construction costs. We know this from our project. Construction costs do not remain the same, and that's a big, big thing we have to bear in mind.
Well, it sounds like if they had gone ahead in the begin, if they'd gotten the money from the town and gone ahead in the beginning, when they were first promised the money. I mean, they've wasted more than nine million. Yeah, you know? They should have just. Paid for the whole thing themselves before.
And there are libraries, it's been rare, but there are libraries where it like with Westboro, like let's. I'm really fingers crossed that it goes through next week for them. Because I am rooting for them, I'll I'll say that publicly, but if this fails. They may lose their state money and then when there's a construction project again in the future, they may have to reapply. And do all of the work that they did for this over again, so that would be very disheartening because. If you've been in the Westboro Library, you know, or you've been followed any part of this project. I think they desperately need the additional space. It's similar to the way we do, you know?
Do they consider cutting the design down just to 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 build a cheaper? Thing, um, I don't mean cheaper in a bad sense, just so that the cost would remain consistent with what the original cost was, like. Lose a couple rooms or something.
The the nine million probably would be in jeopardy then.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. I mean, you could trim, you could trim, you could trim the construction. A little bit by making cer, you know, by by not doing certain things.
But once, once the money is awarded, it was, it was like ours, once the money is awarded, you, there's this, you can't make significant changes, right? It was like, remember when we wanted to do the repair work on like the addition and we ended up using state aid? It's the same basic. Uh, idea is that the state has awarded you based on the project that you submitted, so it's been approved. So when you start substantively altering that, then no. And the the same thing, the state also won't pay for, like, let's say they wanted to give part of their building. As like an office for another town department, the state won't pay for that. They they'll take money away out of the project. Because it's only supposed to be for libraries. It's specific library construction money.
Kinda sad the state can't um make adjustments. When they see how bad this is because there's no way these libraries are gonna be able to continue with such underfunding. Um, but. Those.
That's really sad. Other thoughts?
It's, it's good to know that some of the, you know, like Shrewsbury and Hopkinton, some of them do manage to get it done, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I think fundraising would be important.
And Marlboro is actively doing their project now, so Westboro would be, you know, after them. And then almost all the area, almost all the area libraries, except for us. Like within a certain geographic radius have gotten a renovation, so and then that becomes part of the conversation too. I will say, I agree with you, Amy. I wish adjustments could be made. I I think an important thing to note is that. That this, the construction program for libraries and the Commonwealth Massachusetts is unique. In that you don't have a program like this in any other state, and so we've been able to upgrade. And really accommodate the needs of so many library users over over time because of this, but I think. A lot of this is the timing, like sometimes, and and it's like Janet said, if you wait. You can get in a big trouble fast because of the costs, so.
Yeah, and that's hard to explain to voters, I think, when their pockets are being pinched. They're like, I don't care if it goes up because I can't. You know, pay for my heat this winter.
Right, three hundred dollars a household is a lot.
It is, especially when they're saying, but you're, the heat's going up like six times this winter, so.
I know, I, it's really uh weird times, well. We, we wish them luck in Westboro and I'm sure it will get done eventually. It's just gonna be a a longer road. The Marlboro construction looks great, by the way, if you look at the uh. The contours of the design of the of the addition, it's very um. It's, it matches very well with the original building. It looks great, so. There that is. All right, um. Other uh questions, comments for this meeting, are we, are we happy?
The, the space use policy, because I changed gears and did the circulating wireless hotspot policy. I did not have time to work on it. I will continue to give you updates and I will get you a draft eventually. I know I say this every meeting, but I mean it every meeting. If that's, if that means anything to you, so um, you know, we probably will take a break from it next one. So we can finish, close out the hotspots and then um probably take it up in December, if that's okay with everybody.
That sounds great. Any, uh, okay, uh, any other comments? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
My motion.
Okay, that's, just second is Janet. All right, it is twelve oh nine.
Awesome.
Yes, no worries, I'm gonna do it. Landry, I, um, Davis, trustee Davis. Trustee Manny.
Hi.
Trustee, yes, Danny.
Hi.
Trustee Reagan.
Hi.
Trustee Eckbert.
Hi.
All right, we are officially adjourned. Thank you, everyone. I think we got a lot done. And Ryan, safe trip.
When the next meeting is?
Oh, yeah.
I can tell you.
Yeah.
Usually like exactly a month from now, right? Aren't they the same?
Yes, it's supposed to be the third, it's the eighteenth, right?
The eighteenth would be, yeah, the eighteenth is what I have noted. Um, that is, because the library, we would actually not have the meeting on Veterans Day, which is the week before, and then Thanksgiving is the week after. So it's kind of the weeks, if you, if it's easy to remember, it's the week before Thanksgiving.
Right, right, right. Okay. So are we going with the third Thursday or the second Thursday? Uh, the, the third Friday or the second Friday of the month?
Well, I had a conflict this month, so that was.
That was why we switched it over. So it's usually the second?
Yeah.
I think if there's, if there's a known conflict, we can try to accommodate around. Um, but I think we shoot for the third one.
So why aren't we, I, I have a conflict with the eighteenth, because we're gonna be out of town. Um, did, did we not, could we not do it on Veterans Day? Is that not allowed?
I don't, I, I don't think it is because of um it being a holiday. I don't think we can do a, a public meeting. I could double check with Jim Hegarty. I wouldn't mind doing it on the eleven. Because I don't have to worry about the library opening at the same time.
I think we're not allowed to.
Yeah, I don't think so either.
Right.
Plus, those of us who have kids home that day, it's nice not to have a meeting.
Oh, yeah, good point. You get to spend time with your children. True enough. Okay. So let's leave it at the eighteenth, Jane. Maybe you can phone in.
I can try. I'll be in Phoenix. Um, so.
Winner, are you leaving, are you leaving that morning, Jane? Or are you there earlier in the week?
I'm there for the whole week.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right. Yeah, I, I just, because of Veterans Day and Thanksgiving, we might be kind of stuck with it, but we, I can send out a due to poll and see if there's other times and dates people could meet, so, okay, I'll do that.
Is any, anybody else not okay with the eighteenth?
I'm good.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay, all right. Well, we'll play it by ear. Okay, anyway, thank you. All right, so we are adjourned. Have a lovely week, everyone, weekend. And enjoy the beautiful leaves. And uh, thank you for all you do. Bye.
Bye.
Bye.